What it is, 2000.
Yes.
Yes, what I said. Okay. I don't know how to start any of this up here neither, I don't have to.
And this is our last.
All right. That's a good idea.
It's so cold in here.
Already done it?
You know, one time I was sitting in the green, you know, I've got this gorgeous little grant being given, Harvey wants to just pull up snakes and little parts, but I like them.
I'm gonna add. Okay, I got you.
But I don't have time to be not reading, so he doesn't watch, that is, every minute I've got with him.
Just to come up to him. Uh, she had, uh, August 20th, and he is gorgeous.
Don, can I have one piece of paper? Oh, it's in the block list.
In the body and I'm telling her, when I'm going to do anything, I'll make to send out a message early that I'm, but why would you want her to do your own side? See? If you're a champion, I'll do anything for you, we were surprised.
Now, how was this guy? Down as they busy, eh?
Wasn't walking, went up the street.
All right. That county commission is down session.
Randy Shannon, please give our implication.
If you will pray with me. Our most kind gracious heavenly father, we're indeed thankful for this day, and father, as we take a moment to reflect upon the passing of our fellow commissioner, Mr. Don Patton, we are thankful, father, for the life that we live, for the example of public service that he gave, and father, we know that his influence in this county will be sorely missed, and we hope that your hand of healing will be upon his family as they go through this time of suffering and loss. And father, as we seek here tonight to do the business of the people, may we do so in a manner that is peaceful and productive, and father, as we go through these events tonight, may we always look to the best interest of this community, this county, and to do what is right in my sight. And father, we're so thankful for thy son and sacrifice to be made on our behalf. It's in his name we pray. Amen.
Norman Frazier, let's wait.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited and justice for all.
Amen.
Donna Mountain will be giving our roll call.
Angie Hearn, here. Ward Plant.
Here.
Dana Ferguson.
Here.
Kenneth Miller.
Here.
Rocky Preston. Kalia Dye.
Here.
Norman Frazier.
Here.
Gary Burr.
Here.
Sunny Hall.
Here.
Phil Melton.
Here.
Delaine Fowler.
Here.
Michelle Hill.
Here.
Martin Undery.
Here.
Darrell Hicks.
Here.
Ronnie Hooper.
Hopper.
Hopper, sorry.
Can you just call me off?
Ronnie Hopper.
That's better. Yes, I'm here.
Sorry. Kerry King. Okay, Ward.
Here.
Help me out, Ward. If you all were present on your tablets as well.
Not seven, I mean, present. Fifteen present, no reaction.
Two yes, sorry. Thank you. We have a forum. First on the agenda is gonna be election of chairman. Do we have any nominations? Mr. Hopper?
I nominate Roseanne Ward.
I'm standing.
Anyone else? Nobody else? Call for question or state? Roseanne? Roseanne will be our chair. Oh, we got no roll call, yeah, sorry. I don't like this thing. Okay, can we do a roll call, Donna, sorry?
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Kalia Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Burr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Delaine Fowler?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Martin Undery?
Yes.
Darrell Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Run down one.
Pass.
Fourteen has one pass. And three.
Motion carries Roseanne as the chairman. So, you wanna go on with the pro team, how I'm getting up there? Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is a pro team. Do we have any nominations?
Darrell Hicks.
Darrell Hicks. Anyone else? No one else? We'll let Roseanne do the roll call for that. We had, we had a motion and a second for Darrell Hicks to be our pro team. Roll call, please.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston? Kalia Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Burr?
Yes.
Delaine Fowler?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Martin Undery?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darrell Hicks?
I have.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Kerry King? Fourteen yes, one pass.
Okay. Uh, we'll move on then to the approval of the agenda.
Motion.
Use your, uh, if you don't mind, use your tablets. It's a lot easier for us to see. Have a motion by Norman Frazier and a second by Dana Ferguson to approve the agenda. Okay. Okay, um, you can vote on your tablets now.
Anyone wish to change their vote? We got fifteen yes.
Okay. Agenda is approved. Does anyone have the, the list for our citizens' forum?
I'm sorry.
Jimmy Lee Kenningston? Jimmy Lee is with the president of the minor league football?
Vice president.
Vice president, okay. And then, I don't know, you wanna introduce who you have with you?
This is Cliff Holden, he's also on the board with us, and he coaches.
Okay.
About nine months ago, we came in here and we were asking about football field, and we got told that we could share the soccer fields, and we were just wondering, you know, where that's at.
We have some plans that have been brought back by the architect engineering firm, uh, the projected costs are around a hundred and eight thousand dollars, uh, so we are, um, hoping to look for a grant to help take care of that cost or alleviate it, so that's the projected cost for that, uh, given the fact that we're going into the, um, wet season of the year, um, I thought we could, try to look at that, uh, for the, for the next, uh, season.
All right. Did they, did they include the clay and stuff that they were gonna take out of the park? And did that come off the hundred and eighty?
That's a question I don't, I don't have the answer to, I would have to look at the plans directly if to be able to address that with you. I was just looking at bottom line figures, here was the projected cost of finishing all this up, and, uh, like I said, there were, there was no money already allocated in the budget to handle this, there was no grants, uh, appropriated for this, so we will be looking at every other, every avenue we have for grants to take care of this project to bring to completion, and we do have the plans ready now, but given the, uh, cost and going into the, uh, winter month, it was, uh, just felt that we should look at that for a spring time.
Okay, and I, I wanted to give you all our new numbers, um, just to show you how much we've grown and that we absolutely need this. We've been, we took over this board three years ago, and our first year, we had six teams, and out of cheer in football, we probably had a hundred and fifty kids. Last year during COVID, um, we had twelve total teams and probably two hundred and thirty kids, and this year, we have eighteen teams and over three hundred and fifty kids, and we're getting all that in on one Saturday, so we were just trying to.
I don't know if all it is to work with just the, uh, paying for everything that needs to get done with all the other projects that have been stacked up, but it's quite a lengthy, lengthy list of things to try to accomplish.
All right.
Does anyone have any questions for Jimmy Lee?
The, the, there is a copy of the blueprints, the board chair, there is a copy of the blueprint, y'all, one with the, see, I believe the mayor's office has it.
Yes, come by and look at them, I don't know if I have, I don't know how many copies I have, but you certainly, you wanna look, roll them out and look at them and talk about them and things of that nature.
I've seen a copy of it already, so.
If there's no questions, then thank you.
Thank you.
Roselle, Roselle has a question.
Okay.
Um, is there any other location that the county might have anywhere that maybe the football teams could make use of until something more permanent comes up?
Well, I think these gentlemen here would be better versed in knowing what their needs are, uh, as opposed to myself, but, uh, I'm certainly open to looking for other areas for them to use.
All we need is a flat piece of land, and somewhere to park.
Flat piece of land, somewhere to park, well, we might, might be able to look at that.
All right. Anyone else?
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Uh, Ken Christopher? The names aren't here?
Yes, ma'am, uh, county's mission, I, y'all all know, just whip a seat, it's our nine one one director, and I'm on the nine one one board and, and the sheriff, and, uh, he approached me with an idea a while back that might be beneficial to the county, might save us some money, but I told him that I wanted him to present this to you guys, your idea, because it belongs to these towers and stuff that we have, for our communication belonged to the county, and that wasn't a decision I felt comfortable making on this, I wanted him to present it to you, and then if you decide you want to do this, don't wanna do this, or whatever, it will still have to go before the nine one one board and get their approval, uh, if you decide you wanna go with this, and we're, I'll let him discuss this with you, because he's well versed in this, and when it comes to communication, I either it works or it don't work, and that's all I thought about.
Uh, so, what I brought to him is, uh, one of the things that's been an issue since I've been here in 2013 is the fact that we, the sheriff's department currently works on three different frequencies, so if you're in the north end of the county, the deputies can't talk to somebody in the south end of the county and vice versa. Uh, so what nine one has actually done is we spent a hundred and eight thousand dollars to implement a microwave system where we have now linked five communications towers together to give us the ability to do what's called simulcast, uh, so that we can get the sheriff's three repeaters on one, so that you can talk anywhere on the county. Um, we added in two towers, uh, through use agreements with the rescue squad and with Eva Fire Department to extend his coverage area further east and further north than where it is right now. Um, with that being said, what I need for us to do that is the ability to have the licenses for his frequencies in nine one's name so that we can use those frequencies, uh, to put on the simulcast system, and then that way we can maintain his repeaters and stuff going forward, 'cause we currently have maintenance agreements, uh, in place to get our radios maintained and things like that. Now, all we're talking about is just the repeaters and just the tower sites themselves, uh, any of the radios in the cars or anything like that is still gonna be on the responsibility of the county to maintain that. Uh, we took this approach because if we do it this way, there's no reprogramming radios, there's no replacing radios, there's nothing like that that's gonna cost the county, we're talking about a project, if we transfer these licenses of like four hundred and eighty bucks to transfer the licenses to nine one, and nine one's willing to cover that cost pending the approval of the board, uh, but at that point, then the repeaters would be in the ownership of nine one, and we will be able to use our resources that we have to maintain them going forward, as opposed to kind of being at the discretion when it's down and stuff like that. Uh, so we wanted to present it to y'all first and get y'all's approval, because y'all, I say y'all, the county is technically the owner of the license through the sheriff's department, and we just wanna do it through the proper protocols and proper channels.
Is there any reason why we could not run this through the law enforcement committee and let them take a deeper look at it and then have it set for approval in October?
There's no reason whatsoever, 'cause our next, uh, nine one board meeting is not until December anyway, uh, so we wanted to make sure that we gave plenty of time for however y'all wanted to approach this, to discuss it, and make the best recommendation possible to my board.
Yeah, and I, I think that would be a great way of looking at it, because they can ask the really in-depth questions if any need to be asked, plus it also gives us a chance to put together some things that if there's some legality to it, maybe the county can look at it, to make sure that we're all cohesive and, and moving forward. It could even possibly have a joint lease with it, nine one one and Denton County have a joint lease to the name, I don't know if that's possible or not, but.
Well, through SEC regulations, you have to have one owner, there's, there's no joint, uh, lease agreement, and that's why, what, what we're talking or proposing is a transfer of ownership, uh, for the license itself, uh, which the county has until 2024, I believe, right now, so it's gonna have to be renewed in a couple of years anyway.
Right.
I don't know what that cost is gonna be, um, until the time comes, but, so we're essentially talking about two years remaining on the license, and then at that point.
And you pick up, they go over the license from that.
We would pick up going forward, maintaining the license and keeping everything going.
So that's just a left for the law enforcement committee and.
Yeah, that's fine, and, you know, just to be clear, what we're talking about, though, is, is something that's been desperately needed amongst the sheriff's department since we've been, since I've been here, and we're talking nine years now that I've been with nine one, the deputies really need to be able to talk all over the county and hear what's going on everywhere, and what, what we're proposing can even be expanded upon to actually keep putting GPSs in radios and maintaining locations of officers and things like that going forward, but it all kinda hinges on if nine one can get these licenses in our name to maintain it going forward.
I think that's a great idea, and I'm sure that it will come back with, uh, full approval.
Okay, any other questions, I'm hearing? Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, excuse me, next is the commissioners' forum. We have commissioners that have anything. Delaine, Commissioner Fowler?
I've talked to the mayor a couple times about this situation. Uh, I don't know if everyone's aware of, you know, we got a new election, election commissioner on the office up there, and there's been some talk about the pay that, uh, that's gonna distribute. I've been looking into it, I talked to the mayor about it, we had a line item of fifty thousand dollars in it, and I think we're giving, what, fifteen dollars an hour, mayor?
Thirty-one thousand, two hundred and twelve.
Thirty-one thousand, two hundred and twelve, right. But what, what a lot of people didn't know is, we hit that money in there, that was only a one-time due, that was due to, to employees in there without being, uh, healthy, and, uh, you know, we needed some other things, but what it is, those individuals are gonna be making nine one individuals for nothing, uh, you know, maybe the best thing in the world, we just don't see failure for bringing someone thirty-one thousand dollars, and you've got employees already in your twenty years making less than that, you know, making thirty thousand dollars yourself, but what happens is, I reckon the next budget meeting, y'all do the budget, we do the budget, what are we gonna do about that when the handle says we started twenty-two thousand? How we wanna handle?
It's not a handle, I guess, or.
It's not a handle, I guess.
Yeah, it's a resolution.
But, so what do we do, how do we handle, I know we've talked a little about it, but I'd like for all commissioners to know, what are we gonna do about, do we keep that thirty-one thousand dollars, or, I mean, I just want, I don't even, I wanna know, I feel, how, how does this, how's this affect us in our budget, and in what we've allotted, uh, in our budget in the future, as far as taxpayer dollars, or whatever more, and don't get me wrong, I understand everybody in this support house needs a raise, I mean, really, but, you know, you need to, I thought that's what the handle before, but apparently, apparently it's not.
And going forward, the first thing we need to do is we're gonna have to rescind that resolution, it, it needs to be gone, it was fine when it was put in, but that was six years ago, we're moving on seven years now, it's outdated, the figures no longer are even close to what is needed. Once that's done, we're looking at, uh, increasing the minimum salary, uh, and with that, some tiered increases for all employees in the county, but as far as the budget for the election commission, once the person starts making that salary.
Can change.
You can't reduce it for the same workload, so it would remain the same, uh, unless it fell under one of these tiers that was being changed.
Well, like I said, I want everyone to know the reason that happened like that is because it had fifty thousand dollars in the line item, uh, and that was due to one of the employees, and, uh, I guess Jeff may not realize, and then we've done that one time, so I've been like that for the last twelve years, and, uh, so now, you know, I hate for the rest of the employees, I don't know if that's gonna work out, but, uh, there's something we need to address to keep that from happening again, uh, and, you know, unless everybody gets, gets a raise, does that make sense, or is there anything we can do to that factor?
Well, we're, we're, we're looking at increasing the minimum, and in addition to that, and making adjustments to pay for the employees.
My, my.
That's upcoming in the upcoming budget, now, it's too early to get into exactly what we can and can't do, we just don't know figures yet.
Well, I don't know, I haven't been talking off about it, I, I looked into it, that's what we come up with. Uh, the other thing is, we, uh, Mr. Beasley's pay, uh, state don't cover, uh, during award, during, uh, hubs, slatter, it's always been ninety percent of the tax assessors minus eighteen thousand dollars prior, I mean, until they get certified, and the state kicks in eighteen thousand dollars, it's fifty-five hundred dollars quarter. What we set, what we set is pay at?
I believe the, the, what the election commission said the salary at was sixty thousand dollars.
Sixty thousand dollars.
Maybe fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine.
That's about eight thousand over, nine thousand over, what's always been, and don't get me wrong, I know back in the days it was more, but about the calculations of ninety percent and minus the eighteen thousand dollars until they get certified, so does the election, does the commissioners set that, sign off on that, or not, I mean, do we, as commissioners, sign off on this salary, or?
No, sir, you do not.
You're not.
The election commi, the county election commission sets the salary.
Sets the salary.
For the administrator of elections in the state of Tennessee.
Okay, well, I just know.
And the, as we said, um, at whatever salary they set it at, that, there is a minimum for a certified, uh, administrator of elections that is set, as we've discussed, ninety-nine thousand, the statement will provide, for all certified, they will provide eighteen thousand dollars, um, as a pass-through grant to offset some of that cost.
Yeah.
But the county election commission has the, and I was in contact with, uh, Mr. Gollings, who's the coordinator of a collection for the state of Tennessee, uh, the county election commission has acted well within its authority to set the.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't say that.
To set the, to set the salary, and just to hold it as a minimum, sir, they can set to whatever the maximum is.
Oh, yeah, I agree, yeah.
Uh, to, to whatever the budget out of now, to be perfectly clear, they have to work within the budget that's allocated to them, and simply because of the transition that took place, there was probably more money in those line items than probably would have been otherwise, and because of that, that allowed for the unique circumstances to take place.
Was that eighteen thousand already in there, incorporated into our budget?
Right.
I would, I would say, yes, that it was, because eighteen thousand had come through to us, I believe it's in Grantville, and we would have included that in, in budget for pay for that position.
Well, I just wanna bring all that to attention, obviously, people that ask me about it, I understand how that thirty-one thousand got done, and all I'm looking at it is, just like we talked about before, our budget's a little more than what we, what we wanna do, and there's another fifteen thousand, you know, that, that, just like the wheels of the ballpark, you know, I know it's probably different money coming from different places, I don't understand that much, but I just feel that, uh, there's been a little too much given away for what it is, and not the rest of the courthouse and sheriff and all them getting their, their shade action, but it is something we need to do, is make sure our line items are, so maybe separate them, so that, uh, I had an apartment here or something, you know, has to go through the board, uh, to join.
Well, I'm also sure that with the scramble to get, and by the way, I will, I will say that, you know, since I'm talking next, that the comptroller has approved our budget, and with all of the, um, the circumstances going with the election commission at that particular time, the fact that we were trying to get the budget approved, and all that took place, it was certainly an understandable oversight, but nobody went back and said, wait a minute, those circumstances may not exist anymore, we should relook at that and reallocate that, so if, you know, like I said, it, it was a once-in-a-lifetime event, and, uh, but, uh, but nobody has acted, um, you know, inappropriately.
No, no.
They've simply, they've simply done what they were allowed to do.
It's just something that's, that we've done, that we've never done, but done one time only, and here we are, so, and making a lot of people upset, you know, like, uh, maybe next time we're gonna do something like that, try to help somebody, maybe create it on another line, do something, so that, that either can't be taken advantage of like it was, or maybe just an accident, you know, and not normal, but anyways, that's it.
Any other commissioners? Okay, we'll move on to number four on the agenda, is the county mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Chair. Um, in addition to what we've already discussed and talked about, I'd like to, uh, make mention of the fact that, that September is Workforce Development Professionals Month, and we have a proclamation, you have been provided a proclamation, I will not go to the point of reading this proclamation to you, but I believe that workforce development is the, um, absolute vital, uh, nature for our county, we need to be working with our schools, uh, both at the public schools that we have here, and at our institution of higher learning to help make sure we have the workforce that we need. We have an absolutely wonderful, uh, group of people to work with, with the Northwest Tennessee, um, economic development and workforce development, and all of these fine people that are, that are part, that, uh, happen for us, and they are always ready to help us out in any way that we can, and so one of the things that we have been very proud to do is to recognize this month as, uh, Workforce Development Professionals Month, to honor all those individuals.
as Workforce Development Professionals Month, to honor all those individuals and all the workforce development organizations and partnerships that play such a vital role in our county. So, there is our proclamation, and I am certainly proud to endorse it and sign it. And I know that you were going with me in thanking all of those people who helped make workforce development such a fine opportunity for us in this county. As far as anything else I have, it's been relatively, while it's been an eventful month, it's been a quiet month. And so I will, I think I'm through, unless anybody, any commissioners has any questions.
Okay. Our attorney, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I don't care.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to number five, which is the approval of the minutes, and the motion, and the second motion by Commissioner Dye and the second by Commissioner Ferguson. Anyone have any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gary Ferguson. Mike Manner.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Next is the report of the public utilities, and then a motion and a second for that. A motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Dye. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Next is number seven, a resolution re appointing Gerald Johnson and Duane Preston to the Benton County E-911 Board. A motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Dye. Any discussion? Roll call.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Number eight is the resolution appointing Phil Melton to the Benton County Electric Board effective September twenty twenty-one for a four-year term. I have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Dye. Any questions?
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hill?
Um, was there anyone else that was interested in serving on this board? Because I remember a couple months ago, a gentleman, Mr. Berry, I believe, provided a list of his qualifications and stuff, so I didn't know if he had made his interest in that known.
There were several people that were very interested in this position. It seemed to be a popular position in the county. While this is not the way that I wanted to go about it in a normal way, what I did is, Mr. Melton met the geographic area of the person who was coming off the board being near Eva, and also having known about the people of the county, so it provided a counterbalance to keep the geographic representation in the, on the board.
Okay, is that, is that what the positions are based on? Is, is like commissioners, you've got to have, you know, commissioners in each district?
I suppose the qualifications are just simply who the mayor chooses. I suppose that would be it. But that's how I looked at it. I wanted to make sure that there was a balance of people across the community, across the county, who was letting their input be known.
Okay, so this is a mayoral appointment?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
You're, you're confirming that particular, yours confirming my point.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hopper?
Never mind.
Okay. Anybody else wants to speak on that? If not, roll call, please.
Phil Melton, you have a statement?
Yes. We await for the time to think what to say and vote. There we go.
We have thirteen yes, one of the same.
One of the same.
Um, one pass. Yeah, pass. Yeah, thirteen yes, one, no, and one pass.
Okay. Number nine on the agenda is the resolution to allow the Benton County Airport to declare a green sixteen-foot by seven double axle steel transport trailer as surplus property and give permission to sell. I have a motion by Commissioner Dye and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Any questions? Okay, Commissioner Ferguson. Okay, any other comments?
Reverend, is that appropriate?
Roll call.
Mr. Fowler?
Sorry, Mr. Day Green.
Okay. Anyone wish to change your vote?
Number ten is a resolution to declare the list of office equipment provided by the Benton County trustee as surplus property and give the trustee permission to dispose of the items. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions?
Recommended by budget.
Recommended by budget?
Reverend, is that appropriate?
Roll call.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Fifteen yes.
Number eleven is a resolution to budget drug monies received in the amount of three thousand dollars from the sheriff's Drug Control Fund. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Commissioner Ferguson?
Reverend, is that appropriate?
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Number twelve on the agenda is a resolution to budget insurance recovery funds received from a wrecked vehicle in the amount of two thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty cents within the maintenance and repair services vehicle account. I have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson.
Recommended by budget and insurance.
Any questions for the sheriff on this? Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Number thirteen, resolution to budget funds received in the amount of two thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents within the sheriff's budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions?
Revenant, is that appropriate?
Recommended by budget.
Okay. Roll call.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Fifteen yes, motion carries.
Number fourteen is a resolution to budget funds received in the amount of five thousand dollars within the school budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions?
Just me and Mike?
No.
Any others? Recommended by budget? Roll call.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Fifteen yes, motion carries.
Number fifteen, resolution to budget funds received in the amount of forty-one thousand seven eighty-four eighty-two within the school budget. Motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Any questions? Roll call.
Would you state your?
Yes, I am an extreme after-school teacher of many hands.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Fourteen yes, one of the same. Motion carries.
Number sixteen on the agenda is a resolution to budget the annual interest earned in the amount of twenty-six dollars and sixty-four cents from the will and testament owner Florence left to Benton County so it can be donated to project help with the Benton County electric system. I have a motion by Commissioner Hopper and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? Any others? Roll call.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Number seventeen, resolution to budget funds received from the governor's grant two in the amount of three hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars within fund one seventy-one, other capital projects. Motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions about this? Anyone? Recommended by budget? Commissioner Hopper?
I just, can I get some explanation on this grant two stuff? I don't understand that.
Sir, this is money that's already been there, but because it crossed a fiscal year, had to be re-appropriated for expenditures, because at the end of the last fiscal year, it got automatically moved over to our reserve account, the fund balance, if you will. And so it now just needs to be moved back into the line item, it occupied before that just so we can spend it and use it. So that's all, it's just a, just a bookkeeping thing that has to be done.
Commissioner Hicks, did you want to say something?
I thought you said one seventy-one, this was it, yes.
I probably did, so it is one seventy-eight.
That's why I took it back, because I thought I missed it.
No, it is one seventy-eight. Any others? Thanks for the correction.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Number eighteen is a resolution to budget the funds received from the state of Tennessee for reimbursement on the Asian car grant project in the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred and forty-dollar, forty-five dollars and six cents within fund one seventy-eight, other capital projects. Motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions?
Recommended by budget.
Roll call.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Number nineteen is another resolution about the Asian car grant. It's to appropriate funds received from the state of Tennessee for reimbursement on the Asian car grant in the amount of fourteen thousand four twenty-eight oh nine from the unassigned fund balance within fund one seventy-eight, capital projects. A motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Any questions about this one? Roll call, please.
Mr. Melon?
Mr. Melon?
Mr. Hopper?
One of them I ain't going to want.
Anyone wish to change your vote?
You can't be beat with one.
Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Number twenty is resolution to appropriate the funds from the governor grant one that reverted to the unassigned fund balance within fund one seventy-eight at fiscal year end twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one in the amount of six hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. A motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Anyone have any questions?
Recommended by budget, any minds?
Mr. Hopper?
Uh, yeah, I, what's this, these grants for? It's going into different accounts, I take it?
Again, sir, there's a governor set, and I didn't see it from Mr. Travis, it's not came here, she's our budget administrator. If I get this wrong, you can correct me, but again, this is, the governor set aside one funds and the governor set aside two funds. You just previously did two, now you're doing one, and again, they just reverted to the fund balance, and now they're just being put out so they can be spent again. That's all, that's all it's there.
Governor set aside, I don't want to say with three money, because no one agrees, but it's money coming down from the state, and we are not restricted on it, Jesus. We are encouraged to do certain capital projects, things like that from the state. The governor's grant set aside one, we received last fiscal year. It went into fund one seventy-eight. We've used that for multiple grant projects and matches. Again, like Mayor Shannon just explained, June thirtieth, end of fiscal year, it reverted back to your unassigned fund balance, account number thirty-nine thousand. So, we are just simply re-appropriating that out of your fund balance and putting it into the expenditure accounts for this fiscal year. The previous one, governor set aside two, we did not receive those funds until this fiscal year, so that's why that is being called a budgeting. We, we're budgeting those funds into an expenditure. It's already been reflected into a revenue account, now we need to budget it over into an expenditure. But this one is an appropriation, and this is why I'm a stickler for the term new money. It is not new money. It is an appropriation. New money, when we receive something such as the governor's grant set aside two, we're budgeting that. That's new money we just received. We're budgeting it. This is an appropriation of funds that we already had that hit our unassigned fund balance at June thirtieth, and we're just rolling it back over into this year.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Next is number twenty-one on the agenda, resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of four thousand two hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-one cents from the jail workhouse courthouse litigation tax reserve account in order to make necessary repairs to the courthouse doors. Okay, we had a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Melton on this number twenty-one. Any questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Um, Mr. Melon, did you want a amendment?
Take care, you're happy.
Don't be late.
That child got old, though.
Quiet.
It's quiet, yeah. Mr. Ferguson.
Anyone?
Anyone wish to change your vote?
Motion carries, fifteen yes.
I'm sorry, the mayor and I had a discussion about something here.
We're ready to go for the next one.
Okay, next is resolution number twenty-two on your agenda. It is a resolution to appropriate the funds in the amount of nine hundred dollars from the unassigned fund balance within the county general in order to pay an outstanding invoice received from the Barrett Group for hotel motel tax. At this time, I'm going to step down from the chair. I'd like to call the chairman, Pro Tim, to come up, please, because I have quite a bit I want to say about this.
Okay, I got my papers. Well, I, first of all, I got my resolutions, I didn't have my papers that went with my resolution, so I did not see this invoice from the Barrett Group at that time. I didn't have it at the budget meeting, so I didn't notice anything. But since I got this and I looked at it, my first thought was, we don't owe them any money for July twenty-twenty-one, because her collection from the Barrett Group started in July twenty-twenty. That was her first month of collection. That was a full month of collection. I called the State Park today and asked if the amount that was turned in in July twenty-twenty, which I have a copy of it, was for the full month of July twenty-twenty. And they said, yes, it was, but that was a full month. So I also have here where she sent in an invoice for that month, she billed us for the month of July twenty-twenty, and I have copies of where we paid her for July twenty-twenty. So if you count, okay, her contract says that we'll pay her for twelve months forward. So if you count July twenty-twenty, and we have paid her through June of twenty-twenty-one, that is twelve months that she has collected. So this July twenty-twenty-one, she's billing us for thirteen months of collection. But if you also read what she did in her letter to us, she says that she wants to trade the month of July twenty-twenty and give us back the twenty-six dollars and eleven cents. She wants to trade that for July of twenty-twenty-one. And if you look at the difference in it, I mean, who wouldn't want to trade? Because, you know, twenty-six dollars versus nine hundred dollars? Well, that's not in her agreement, that's not in the contract. She can't just choose to say that she wants to give up one month for the other. We paid her for twelve months of collection off of Nathan Baker Forest State Park, and we did not owe her this nine hundred dollars and ninety-seven cents. It's all on paper here, but, I mean, I don't know how anybody could dispute it. I mean, twelve months of twelve months, we all can count, and she's been paid for those twelve months. So I do not like the fact that she has been paid for this. That's what the mayor and I was talking about. I didn't think that she should be paid until we passed this regulation of her asking for the money that had the invoice attached to it, but I found out that it's already been paid. So we paid her for thirteen months of collection, so I think it's up to us what we would like to do about it. I think she owes us the money back myself, so if we want to pursue that, we might ask our attorney about it.
I would very much recommend that we let the county attorney look at this and see what our legal position is. And to move forward. I agree that the months are not kosher and that there is more to the story than I knew at the time when we were looking at the resolution. And let him make a decision about that and get back to this as a requisition of a little standing.
Okay, I've got just a couple other things I'd like to say. Thirteen dollars isn't a lot of money, y'all, but if you look, you probably may not have it because this was a year ago, but last year on July twenty-twenty, when she billed us for the month of July, the total of receipts for the hotel motel tax was five hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty cents. Okay, our percentage of that is five percent. So the state owed the county twenty-six dollars and eleven cents. Well, her agreement says that she's to collect fifty percent. She didn't take the fifty percent, she took all of it. So I know thirteen dollars in a month, a lot of money, and I'm not worried about the thirteen dollars, but actually, she overbilled us for that first month to begin with. And also in her letter, she states that on July the twenty-second, well, she says here in her letter, as a reminder, the tax did not go into effect until July twenty-two, twenty-twenty. Well, that's wrong also, because I have the resolution here that the county passed that said that that tax goes into effect July one of twenty-twenty, not July twenty-second of twenty-twenty. So I don't know if she was trying to say she didn't get a full month or what, but the tax went into effect July one, and the lady, Ms. Williams, at Nathan Baker Forest State Park, told me finally that the tax went into effect July first, not July twenty-second. So those are just two other things that I would like to point out that is not, that I don't agree with in this, and I don't think that we should approve it.
Let me, I have a chair, this resolution is not through the pain, that this is just simply taking the money and putting it back into the code. So that probably should be approved, and let the county attorney deal with the contract and how it deals with this specific issue. That's right, that we move this money back. So this is just an internal appropriation, readjustment of money, and probably should be approved. The other issues that you brought up are very well-founded, I believe, should be given to the county attorney to let him give us a strategy on where we stand.
Okay, then, will you explain to me, when we get an invoice from her, we automatically pay it without anybody looking at it?
Well, that was news to me, but it's one of those things where it's, when we have bills that come in that are perceived to be, you know, valid deals, and if there's money available in the account for expenditure to pay that, protocol has always been that we just simply pay the bill as we go. This particular bill was one that was, it wouldn't have been noble by our staff in any way to look at it, at that particular issue, it did have nine hundred dollars in the account, so they did pay it, and I'm sure I signed it, but when this came up, that surprised me when I asked about it today, after having looked at the contract myself, that we already paid the bill. And this is, this resolution is simply just a removing of, moving around of different funds.
Okay.
That's not the way I read it. It is true, sir, that the resolution actually had a clearer wording, but in talking with Ms. Travis, that bill has been paid, and this is just simply moving the money back to another account. And as I said, that was, took me unaware today as well, because I had discussed this with her, that's where we are with the issue.
And just to explain, I drafted this resolution to appropriate the nine hundred dollars for this invoice, because it was my understanding that we were done paying her invoices at fiscal year in June. And I was at home on quarantine, drafted the resolutions, I sent them to Roseanne, Randy, and Jean, to all groups, and Jean responded to me and said, you know, by the way, this one's already been taken care of and paid, but you can still appropriate that nine hundred to replace what was twenty-five thousand and nine. So that's why this appropriation still stayed on the agenda.
So how do we move forward?
Again, I would...
Make certain that this goes to the attorney, because if we say we approve this, which I don't approve it because of the way...
Then let's, why wouldn't we just either take a no vote on this or table this until next month? We can file a resolution, let the county attorney give a look at it and see exactly where we stand legally in terms of the contract. If his analysis is on par with ours, then he can give us some strategies on how we should go forward. If he believes in his opinion that it should, for lack of a better word, is a righteous pay, then we could just move forward with that as well. So we'll give this to him and let him look at it, and we can table this particular resolution and forward from consideration to act.
Hold on just a minute, Rochelle. Is that all you had, Ms. Dina?
Well, yeah, that's all I have to say. I don't want to keep on talking about it, but I mean, you know, to me, I think somebody should be looking at, when you're paying, paying the bills, I think somebody should have checked to see how many months she had been paid, because that's something that has fallen through now, and we paid it, and she's... That's just my opinion. So I don't have anything else to say about it.
You want to take back over, or...
I think not, I don't have a follow-through, so you have to follow through with it, yeah.
All right, Ms. Dana, have you got anything else? You was next.
Did I make the motion that we tabled this till next month?
Need to postpone it.
Postpone it till next month, all right, different terms.
I'll say... A motion to postpone it until next month.
All right, we got, we got a couple more people wanting to speak on this. Dwayne, you're next.
No, she, she covered that. You know, what happens if I look at, of course, Shaw, he's going to have to look into it, it's probably going to cost us a little change. What happens there if she is wrong? Does he pay his, pay her fees, or pay, does Ms. Barrett pay his fees? Or...
The original contract that was entered into in January twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, it does allow that if there's a contract dispute, the, it does have a fee shifting provision, and in lay term, that means whoever wins gets their turn to take the table.
All right, the next one was Rochelle.
I would just like to make a request. At some point before this resolution was passed out, you guys became aware that the bill had already been paid. I would like to request that in the future, if the bill's been paid, that the wording in the resolution reflect that, so we truly understand what we're voting on.
Well, you, I could not agree with you, Madam Melton, and what happened is that I found out that it was paid, and I was talking with Travis about it, and telling her that there's a good chance to fulfill this resolution, so I turned it over to the county attorney for consideration.
Thank you.
And so I was unable to affect that further.
Is that everything, Rochelle?
Yes.
All right, Ronnie Hopper?
Has the contract run out?
We can terminate that.
The contract is a twelve-month perpetual, the anniversary date is in January, and so there's a sixty-day provision to terminate the contract, if you would like to exercise that often, we need only, if there are no sixty days prior to its termination, it's anniversary day, so it will not continue.
So she's got till January first?
Well, she's under, the contract, as it was originally entered into in two thousand and eighteen, and was put in in two thousand and eighteen, it was a year-by-year contract, it's not a month-by-month. So once it renews, it's twelve months, under the contract language as I read it. So it would just simply need to be, she's going to be going through the twenty-second day of January two thousand and twenty-two, regardless of what we do, and so you're just going to terminate it, so that on its anniversary date, it does not automatically continue.
I wasn't aware that that was of January, January, that was fiscal year.
You can enter into contracts anytime you wish, and that's, that was the time that this was passed in two thousand and eighteen.
Was the process?
We're just sending a notice that, you know, we probably should run this through budget to make sure that they're okay with it. Once that's done, have a resolution in the full body to terminate the contract you would forward. Get it, and there we go.
Any other comments or questions? If none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Well, we have a motion to...
I thought we, I thought we weren't going to do that.
I will second that motion.
We need to...
All right.
The motion to postpone.
We got a motion and a second to postpone, any discussion on that?
I need somebody to second, because Bill did the original... Do we have a second?
Yeah, Rochelle did it.
Well, it's the Dana did it.
And that's fine, I don't care.
So Phil Melvin...
The motion didn't, Dana seconded it.
That's what, that's what I was hoping, postpone it. Motion to table. No, postpone.
Postpone, all right, sorry, postpone.
Can we put in there, just out of curiosity, that we want to rescind her thing, give her notice? We can't use that, but it's a little early.
Okay, so this is the motion, postpone the resolution number sixteen. Can you prove it?
Yeah, no other discussion, we'll, we'll vote.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to be a yes if somebody wants to hit my doey back there.
I'm a future. Anybody wish?
Anybody wish to change your vote? Fifteen yes, postponed now.
So we don't need to vote on the other?
All right.
Number twenty-three on the agenda is a resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of three hundred dollars from the unassigned fund balance within the county highway fund, One Thirty-One to budget within the highway equipment expenditure account. I have a motion by Commissioner Dine and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions, discussion?
Approved by budget, recommended by budget.
Okay.
You said three hundred dollars, it's not three hundred.
It's three hundred thousand, isn't it? That's a big difference. Okay, any questions for Mr. Carter? Would you like to speak on that, Buck?
I'm, just clear my, sorry, this is, this is already, and I would advise by the budget process back at the Supreme, if we needed to delete this money out, but it's come before you and put it back in there, so that's what I would do, whereas no new money.
We're just moving the money, right?
Yes, put it back where it needs to be.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Carter or anybody? Roll call, please.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Number twenty-four is a resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of five hundred dollars from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund and budget within the Chantry Port budget to, in order to cover the waterless, a water lease for the current fiscal year from Camden Water Care. Motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions?
Recommended by budget, any questions?
Roll call, please.
Attorney Carter? Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Number twenty-five is a resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, five eighty-four, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-four cents from the unassigned fund balance within Fund One Seventy-Two, Community Development, in order to make the water tank maintenance agreement payment for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two fiscal year. Now, a motion and a second. Now, motion and second? I don't show a motion or a second on that one.
Ms. Khalid on a motion, and Ms. Dana Ferguson second.
No, it's due. Well, I mean, it's not showing on my tablet who made a motion, who made the second. That's okay. I mean, if I can move on. I think Darryl did something to it.
He says it on mine. You already had the money come up where it did.
You should have updated.
All right. We'll try to move on. Any questions for this? Commissioner Hill?
There were some questions brought up in some of the committees. We are locked into this already, correct?
Well, you're locked, because we own the water tower at the industrial park, we're locked in to maintain it.
Yes, but with this particular company.
And this particular company, we do have an ongoing, just like we talked about earlier, we do have an ongoing contract. And I have, given the fact it's being paid now, and we'll be looking at it again for another year, I will just wait for some free time in my office to call and ask the city and other people who they might have. Just to get some more votes to see if we can save some-
That's all I was wondering. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Fifteen yes. Motion carries.
Next is number twenty-six, which is a resolution to establish a redistricting committee for Benton County. The mayor might want to speak on this. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Dye and a second by Commissioner Ferguson.
As you know, we've just gone through the census. The twenty-twenty census is concluded. According to its model, Benton County's population had decreased to fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-four citizens. I think that is not a valid metric for our population, but it's what we have to deal with. That being said, I was speaking with C-Pass, and they came down and met with myself and the Minister of Election, Mr. Jeff Beasley. And it turns out that what we thought could have been a very complicated, time-intensive process is actually going to be quite easy. We do not have to move any lines or change any of the districts. Now, that committee still needs to be approved. It still needs to meet, and it still needs to go through the proper process to do all this. But I believe we can have all this wrapped up in October and send it off to the state, and state would be happy with it. They'd love to have that. Everything got pushed down because of various things, and so, we didn't only have the amount of time. That is also, you know, trying to get everybody up to speed, and while I was thinking that, you know, we need to have a, everybody looking forward and have this comprehensive and representative committee we do. And so, once we get all this done and get it approved, it should be back with little changes at all, if any. But I hope you do consider passing this resolution back because even though we may not make any changes, it is a needed committee.
Any other? Mr. Hopper?
We're not going to, did I hear, we're not going to change the districting lines at all?
We don't have to. That committee can make all the changes they want. They could flip the county upside down, pull it around, do whatever you want. But you, as the commission, has climbed approval on the districts that represent Benton County. That along with where the precincts are goes to the election commission. But Mr. Beasley was perfectly happy with leaving everything as is, particularly given the fact that we do have a full-blown, major election coming up in twenty-two. So, all this came together as a perfect storm and to get everything ready. So, every district being late, and we have, you know, they're going to start letting out information on the election in December of twenty-one, I believe. And so, we want to get everything ready and done.
Anyone else? Ms. Ferguson.
Recommended by Judge Ziff.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Why? Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries fifteen yes.
Next is appointing notaries. We have four. Sonia Leopard, Dottie Hollingsworth, Amanda Miller, and Miss Dees Putin. We have a motion by Commissioner Dye and a second by Commissioner Hicks to approve the notaries. Any questions, discussion? Roll call.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
I think we're clear with that enough.
Motion carries fifteen yes.
Okay. Any other business? Anybody have anything? Commissioner Dye?
I'm trying to keep this short and sweet before you guys, I don't want to go home. I'm going to read a letter for myself to you guys. Dear Mayor Lashley, Inter-Mayor Shannon, and the Benton County Commission, the last three years, we have accomplished a lot of great things than previous commissions have within their first term. For myself, these past three years have opened and closed many doors in my life. Some of you may have seen me here as a small child sit up in the jury box when I was four years old and my mother was first elected commissioner, and have seen me grow into, grow into an adult and become one of the youngest to ever be elected as commissioner. I learned and was taught at a very early age that doing the right thing isn't always the most popular thing. I hope that Benton County continues to move forward for the people of my generation and generations to come. Within these three years, I have had a tremendous amount of support and encouragement from my family and the citizens of Benton County. I'm so thankful and I appreciate it more than any of y'all will ever know. I've tried to serve and represent the citizens of not only the third district, but all of Benton County with respect, dignity, and compassion. I've been available anytime that anyone has ever needed to contact me about their concerns. I wanted to take this time to thank you for allowing me to serve the citizens of Benton County to the best of my ability. In these past three years, it's been an honor and a privilege, and I will never forget, and I hope that we will continue to prosper. As though Benton County will be for my forever home, my fiancee and I have found it in our best interest to move outside of Benton County. So, effective today, Monday, September twentieth, I will resign you as third district commissioner. Respectfully myself.
Thank you, Kate. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
With Mr. Dye, the head of Mayor Lashley, I know that I extended his heartfelt appreciation for the work that you've done in the very short time that we've worked together in these fantastic issues that have been exemplary. And your service to this community will always be remembered. And thank you very much for your consideration.
I'd like to say that it's been a pleasure working with Commissioner Dye. It really has. Thank you for your service to the county. As bad as we hate to, we will declare your seat in the third district vacant, and we will put an announcement in the paper. And at next month's meeting, we will fill a seat in the third district. As bad as I hate to say it, we will have to appoint someone to fill Mr. Patton's position in the first district. So, that will be announced, will be put in the paper also. So, that'll be the first district also next month that we'll be appointing someone to. And I'd like to say that we all need to keep Mr. Patton's family in our prayers. I enjoyed working with him. I know one thing that I'll miss will be his ringtone on his phone.
And the serenade.
And the serenade, that's right. And I would also like to say thank you to the commission for voting me chairman again tonight. I've enjoyed this past year. And not only do I feel like y'all are, we're all co-commissioners, I feel like we're friends. I know, I consider y'all my friends, and I hope you do me. So, I look forward to being chairman for another year. Anything else needs to be said? Motion to adjourn. Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Committee appointments?
Committee appointments? Okay. Well, I was advised by Mr. Melton that in case that I was elected chairman, that it would be good for me to go ahead and have the committees appointed so that we wouldn't miss our committee meetings in October. So, I do have those. I don't have copies of that, of those committees, but I can get them real quick if you want me to before we leave or... Do we have to approve those committees?
They serve at your discretion.
That's right. Okay. So, I do, I can go get those printed, or I can email them to you tomorrow?
Email's fine.
Email? Okay, I'll email those out to y'all tomorrow. Okay. Dana made a motion to adjourn. Okay, wait just a minute before we vote. Mr. Carter has something to say.
Everybody, all of you guys coming to the highway department tomorrow between ten and two, we're going to have an open house and you can see through your highway department and what we've worked for and we're highly proud of it, and I want everybody to see it. And take a look, we'll take a little criticism, a little pat on the back, get that where.
Now. Everybody vote if you want to adjourn.